Meeting is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris. The matters listed before are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Please stand for a moment of silence.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce two of our wonderful Burke School students who are going to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. First, I'd like to introduce Addison Merrill, who is a fifth grade student at the Burke School in Mrs. Kennedy's class. She is the daughter of Jim and Lee Merrill and sister to Sam Merrill, who is a seventh grade student at the Higgins. Addison enjoys playing lacrosse, soccer, and her personal favorite, basketball. Addison enjoys cooking dinner with her brother, reading the works of Abby, and has love for cats. Addison recently enjoyed studying the Revolutionary War in Mrs. Lundigan's class. What a great teacher she is, isn't she, Mrs. Lundigan? My children had her. Yeah. Oh, they did, and she's great.
She's wonderful.
We love Mrs. Lundigan.
Yes, we do.
And is looking forward to meeting new teachers at the Higgins next year. Welcome. And now I'd like to introduce Taylor Karafa, who is also a fifth grader at the Burke School in Mrs. Broton's class. She is the daughter of Heath and Kim Karafa and sister to Hannah Karafa, who was a seventh grade student at the Higgins. Taylor loves soccer and is a student of dance, focusing on musical theater. Taylor recently enjoyed the fifth grade science fair presenting a project entitled Wonderful Windpower. Taylor enjoys reading the works of J.K. Rowling and baking chocolate chip cookies at home. Taylor loves dogs and is looking forward to meeting new friends on her journey to the middle school next year. Welcome. How are you? You'll help us lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have a couple of those chocolate chip cookies.
You can bring them to soccer, too, if you'd like.
Great job, kids.
Great job. All right. We'll move on to approval of minutes.
Motion to receive and approve.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve budget meeting minutes of May 1, 2018?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Approval of bills?
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3798, dated May 8, 2018, in the amount of $701,877.40, subject to audit. Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3799, in the amount of $150,612.55, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Next on to continue business, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting for the Higgins School Building Committee will be next Thursday, May 17, at 3:45 at City Hall. The agenda items on that, for that meeting, will be continued discussion on landscaping, an update on all of the punch list items, as well as preparations for closeout. So, again, that meeting is always open to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. At this point, I'd like to turn, public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to say a few things? No? All right. With that said, Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I am recommending, as we have a legal obligation to do, either recommend that we continue in the school choice program or not, I am recommending that we continue in the school choice program. It has been financially beneficial to the school district, and we have had no instances of difficulty with the program. So, I am recommending to the school committee that you vote that positively, so I can report it to the State Department of Education before the deadline.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the Superintendent?
Second.
On the motion, Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you, through the chair. Dr. Levine, how many students do we currently have enrolled in that school choice?
That's a good question. Do we know?
I'll get you that first thing in a minute. Okay. And my second question kind of would need to have that number, but is it going to impact our class size at all?
No. And that's a good question, and I should explain to the public that I have total control over how many kids come in at what grade level. It's all by the ability to accept kids, new kids. Once we do accept a child on a school choice program, we do have to treat them as any other PBD school kid, and they're here for the duration of their public school experience if they so choose, and as long as they behave within the guidelines of any other public, PBD public school student. But I have the choices to where to put these kids when they apply. I take a very hard look at grades in every school before I accept a school choice student, and I always call the principal first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on? Roll call vote? Are we? Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Just an alert that I met with the Anti-Defamation League. Mr. Hockman was part of that meeting. Ms. Murtagh was part of that meeting. We would like to begin a program next year through the Anti-Defamation League that begins to talk about respecting differences. It's not simply a Holocaust-type of program. It is more of a socialization program to understand people's differences, where they come from, what their cultures are, and how to react to people with different backgrounds. We want to make sure that we're ahead of the curve. Our experiences, our negative experiences in this school department are extremely limited, and I'm very proud of that. But that doesn't mean that we should rest on our laurels. This program will cost some money. We will take it out of professional development next year, which is one of the reasons why we need some flexibility in the budget regarding professional development and programming. But it's a program worth having, and I would ask Mr. Hockman if he has any thoughts on that.
Yep. Excuse me, through the chair, thank you, Dr. Levine. I couldn't agree more. Our population is becoming more and more diverse here in PBD. We do have, although there are minimal incidents, we do have, and we have had historically, some issues regarding students dealing with other students in a way that isn't always respectful when it comes to the diversity. And if we can, the amount of money that this program is going to cost is minimal. I think it was $8,000 or something along those lines. And one of the things I liked about the presentation that was provided to us was that it's peer mentoring. So, it's students that are getting trained, students that are able to come back from training and talk to their peers at the middle school and high school levels. And I think that that's, that may be the most effective way for middle school and high schoolers to receive this message, is from their peers and not from teachers or staff members. So, I thought it was worthwhile. I hope that it's implemented as quickly as we can, and I think it's something that will continue to move this district forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been following along on the ADL materials for quite some time. I was really very impressed several years ago when I was invited to attend an event and learned about the opportunities that they have for education. And this is a wonderful program. Everything I've ever read about it is that it's excellent. One question I do have is, having read this material, are we looking at this for our middle and high school students or for K through 12? Because they offer both.
Middle and high school.
Okay. I really do think it's a wonderful thing to do. We've also had some discussions, it was at Parent Advisory Board, as well as the Special Education Parent Advisory Board, about familiarizing students with people who are different, from different backgrounds, different abilities. And I'd like to see if we could publish a cohesive curriculum so that people understand what we are teaching our students and what we have available, and if we could do that, you know, for the next school year, implement this in time for the next school year, as well as that other program, which I think was kind of geared at the elementary level, if I'm correct. But I think these are very, very important in this world. People really do need to understand the differences and appreciate them. So, thank you for bringing it in.
Thank you. Through the chair, thank you. The next item for business is not listed. We just completed the business manager interviews. We would like very much for the school committee to interview the finalists that we're going to recommend by the end of the week. We would like you to convene at 5 o'clock before the 6 o'clock budget meeting that's scheduled, to do the public interview of the business manager candidate, our candidates that we send forward. We have a little work to do tomorrow to finalize who it is that we're going to send forward, but the committee, the screening committee, is unanimous in who we think will be moving forward. So, after a couple of phone calls tomorrow and a couple of checks, we feel that we would like to move quickly. We know that these positions are highly regarded and in great demand. We know that the candidate that we're interested in is in a couple of other pools, and we would like to get a jump on this. So, I would ask that the school committee approve the meeting starting at 5 o'clock next week to interview the business manager candidate that will be recommended forward.
So moved.
Second.
Vote? Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 You've all received. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Doc, through the chair to the committee, should we take a vote on the prior recommendation for the ADL? If so, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve that.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, on the motion?
This is, did you say it was an $8,000 cost? Is this in the budget that we're currently going to be working on already?
We'll find it out of professional development and possibly out of grants.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We've had a donation of a machine with which I am unfamiliar, a washing machine, to the Carroll School from Paula D'Escoli. I ask that you accept it with thanks.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second, with a question.
Yes. Ms. Dunn?
Now, you're unfamiliar with this machine or with washing machines in general?
In general.
Okay. Wanted in on the record.
Wait till we get to refrigerators.
I'm going to call Mrs. Levine.
Did we get a vote?
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. And the last bit of business, again, not listed, you have in front of you the recommendation for transportation for the fees for next year, and you need to approve the letter to go out to parents. We are ready to send the letter and get moving on this. So, I open that, I ask through the chair to open this for discussion, and then eventually a vote on school transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Levine.
So, I guess I would need a motion to accept the recommendation on transportation, and a second?
Motion to follow the recommendation of the Superintendent?
Second.
Second? Mr. Miko, second. Mr. Hockman on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, tonight, I'm not able to support this. If this is something that's going to be called for, for a vote tonight, this is a conversation that started several months ago with regard to what distances we were going to utilize, which we have control over, to determine transporting students to schools, students in particular at the high school, some of whose parents came before us, I think in February, talking about their desire to have their students transported, their children transported by school bus to the high school. And at that time, we voted, and I supported that at that time, I believe, that we weren't going to change the policy mid-year, but we would have an opportunity to review the policy before the 18, 19 school year. And here we are, voting on that very policy and user fee without having had those meetings and that opportunity to address this policy and see if there was an ability to change it, or a desire to change it, or not. I can't say, as I'm talking tonight before all of you, that the policy as it is presently written is bad for the school district or is inappropriate for the school district. I'm not saying that at all. What I am saying is that we did tell people that we would give an opportunity to have a hearing on it in subcommittee. We did actually move this to subcommittee about a month ago, and haven't had any information received or conversations regarding it, and here we are voting on it. So, it's for those reasons that I cannot support this tonight, and I wish and I hope that we will have those meetings and get that information so that we can assess what's being offered and whether it's appropriate or inappropriate, and whether we should do more or what we're doing is sufficient. So, thank you for hearing me.
Mr. Miko?
Thank you, through the chair of the committee. In fairness to Mr. Hockman, I agree with you. Where it wasn't on the agenda, we should give those parents an opportunity to be heard, again, if they would like to be heard. With that said, I was wondering, through the chair, to Jared, if we could, could you tell us what the $300 fee per student, what that actually adds up to towards a bus, a new bus? So, for example, if we wanted to add a bus, how much would that cost? And where does that $300 go? Is that 10% of the cost, 20%, 80%? Where is that? What does a bus actually cost? And what does that $300 fee, how far does that go? And how much would we have to absorb as a committee, as a city, on that?
Through the chair, right now, the $300 goes towards the offset. Right now, the offset for the FY '18 budget is $335,000. And we, for next year, it's $275,000. We get about $275,000. So, for the students that pay for the transportation, it goes towards that offset. The amount that we pay contractually to Healy Bus is around $1.38 million. Included in that is rentals, but that is roughly the price of the contract for FY '18.
Thank you, sir. And what would be, through the chair, what would be the cost of one, hypothetically, if you added one bus? What would that cost be to fill a bus with students?
I do have that number. Bear with me. I want to say it's $60,000. It's about 60, but let me get that for you.
And if we could roughly, through the chair, how many students would be on that bus? Just so I could, is it 40, is it 50 students?
71.
So, 70 students times 300?
Yep. And $60,000 per bus is accurate.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's total cost for the bus or our cost?
That is, if you took the contractual amount divided by the number of buses we have, it equals about $60,000.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dunn?
Just so that the committee members can be aware of, one of the things that have been worked on and that our meetings have been put on hold for a little bit, working with Mrs. Breznerhan and Mr. Stanton, some of the figures that we're looking, we were looking for were, what is the actual cost if you, you know, you keep what we have with the $300 fee? What is the cost if we change the distances? And how many students live within each distance? There are several apartment complexes and neighborhoods that if you were to include them, your costs will rise. Also, one of the other considerations going into it is not everyone pays the $300 fee. We have reduced fees. We have free and reduced lunch, so students don't pay a fee, and that all has to go into it. So, I didn't want anyone thinking that, you know, on a bus, if you have 70 students, that all 70 are paying $300 for that, for the use of the bus. It depends on the level of the school that they're attending, as well as all kinds of different situations. And figuring all of those out really is information that the subcommittee would like to have in order to have a bigger discussion on this. I believe there is a timeline as far as getting out the letter, and that may be a consideration, but I don't think it would be too, well, I don't know. I don't want to say. I don't know if it's a problem sending it out at any further later date. If we could find that out, that would be good.
Through the chair, I think that we could, if it is the will of the committee, I think, and I'll get back to you tomorrow if I'm wrong, I think that we could wait until the meeting on the 22nd. We could get you some estimates as to the increases in cost by maybe half-mile increments.
Yeah, that's what we've been working on.
And we could also invite the public and make sure that they know it's on the agenda.
That would be good.
Okay. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Levine.
You're welcome. So, just to, we have a motion that was seconded. Shall we table that until the 22nd? So, that would have to be a vote of the committee?
Yeah. Motion to table that till the 22nd of May.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
With that, I am done with my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Next is our written communications. We received a letter from the Italian Community Center of Grade L-N regarding their annual scholarship. Then we have a letter from the PBD Federation of Teachers regarding the first book program. And then we have a letter from PBD City Council regarding school start times. Motion to receive written communications, agenda items 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
On the motion, Ms. Dunn?
On the motion, with the letter regarding the scholarship, could we make sure it goes up to the high school?
That's already, yes, that's already at the high school, Ms. Dunn, and being worked on now.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. I also have something regarding the motion that we received from the city council, just so the members can know. I had contacted the counselors on our liaison committee. The two counselors are Counselor Turco and Counselor Rozignol. And during that contact, it was by email, I was trying to schedule a meeting, and I was going through the clerk, through Mr. Spanos. We've been back and forth on the dates, and I don't know why, you know, why they took a vote, but we are working on this, and I think it's just an informational item as far as discussing any issues, questions that they may have.
Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. I would like to recognize Counselor Rozignol, who's here, and you're part of that committee. If you could just maybe relay, since I am working on the school start times, that I think the next step that we were going to take was we were preparing surveys. That was the last bit of information we had received. So, I think that this committee is going to be modifying them to, you know, what would be best for PBD. But that was put on hold for budget negotiations and end of year type of things. But we'll get back to that. But I believe that will be our next step, is sending out those surveys. So, you can let Counselor Turco know. Feel free to reach out to any of us at any time, shoot an email, but right now, we kind of have the budget going on. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, not that I need to come to Ms. Carpenter's defense, because she does a great job all on her own, but as this was ramping up, Parkland occurred, too. And our focus was diverted for obvious reasons. So, even before the budget hit, this has been something that's been on our radar for a while, and for necessary reasons, we needed to divert for a little while.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? No? All right. With that said, we'll move to the subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee? Nothing to report. Okay. Fine.
You skipped me.
Yep. School safety, we have a meeting scheduled for May 22nd, Tuesday, at 6 o'clock, right here at the Higgins, before our school committee meeting. Athletic and wellness?
Nothing to report, but we will be scheduling a meeting soon.
Okay. Quality and standards Subcommittee?
Nothing at this moment.
Liaison to City Council and Advisory Boards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you've heard, we're setting up a meeting, a liaison meeting with the City Council Liaison Subcommittee. And regarding the Parent Advisory Board, our next meeting will take place Monday, May 21st. It may begin at 7:30, which is a little different. Normally, we're at 7:00, but two of the members of the Subcommittee are already going to be at a previous meeting, beginning at 5:00. The topic for the Parent Advisory Board will be the PTO questions regarding insurance for activities, as well as a discussion of maintenance fees for playground donations. And that will probably take place here at the Higgins, either 7:00 or 7:30. The notice will go out with the exact time.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Building and ground Subcommittee?
Thank you. We have a meeting scheduled on the 22nd at 5:30, prior to the safety meeting and prior to the regular school committee meeting here at the Higgins. Thank you.
And then Special Education Parents Advisory Board, I scheduled a meeting for Thursday, May 24th, at 7 o'clock at the Higgins. And with that, Ms. Carpenter?
The Finance Committee has been in active negotiations with all units, and at this time, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session so that I may update you on union negotiations and discuss strategy, with the intent to return.
To return or to go into finance? I mean, to budget?
Do we need, is there anything else left on the agenda for anyone to discuss?
No?
No. Then we won't return into regular session.
We'll start a budget after.
Before we take the vote, if I may, Ms. Carpenter, I think a few weeks ago, you reported that we've reached a tentative agreement with AFSMI?
We have.
Have we had an opportunity to, or when will we have an opportunity to review that?
Attorney Khan will be preparing that document soon.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Could you just second?
I need a second.
Second on the motion to go into executive session and to return?
Return into a budget session.
Return to the budget session.
Roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you for a great meeting. Thank you for a great meeting.
I'd like to open up a, our budget meeting this evening. Uh, today being May eighth, two thousand eighteen, and it is approximately eight forty-five. I'd like to open up the budget meeting. Um, want to turn it over to Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh?
Thank you.
For some opening comments before we start getting into questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, based upon our last discussion, I made some adjustments to the recommendations that I, um, have made previously. I have, uh, added, uh, a significant sum of money to the supply line as a cut, uh, district-wide. I have brought it up to five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I would ask the principals who have been hoarding, I'm just kidding, but hoarding paper to share with, uh, the rest of the, uh, group next year. Um, I have, uh, increased, uh, professional development, uh, to thirty-five thousand dollars from ten thousand dollars as a cut. And that money would come from the line that, uh, was being talked about last time of the forty thousand dollar line. We only need, uh, four thousand dollars of that for mentoring, um, for the superintendent. But we do need significant money, significant meaning around ten thousand to maybe fifteen, um, for mentoring, uh, that is mandated for the new people coming in, which will include a new Brown School principal, um, an assistant superintendent, a new business manager, a new CTE director at the high school, et cetera. So what's left in that line now, I believe, is fifteen thousand dollars, four thousand dollars for the mentoring program and, and eleven thousand dollars for other mentoring. I have, um, put back, uh, a custodian, um, so that the cut is only one custodian, and that happens to be em- uh, not filled right now. Um, therefore, uh, there is no particular person, uh, who would be cut out of that line. The high school dean and Higgins housemaster are both back in. The reason there's a fifteen thousand dollar cut in each line is because we will likely be hiring at less money than the people who have re- uh, retired, um, uh, out of that, uh, line. Nothing else, I don't think anything else has changed except, uh, one thing I would like to bring to your attention that is not on your sheet. Uh, there was a question that was asked about, uh, a line item of, of maintenance. Um, I believe, Mr. Hockman, you, you asked about it last time. Um, we think we have found what the issue is, and, and, uh, the blame lay with me. I believe a maintenance floater position was filled, um, that actually should not have been filled. Uh, it should have been three maintenance floater positions instead of four. Uh, I would recommend to you that, uh, that is a position that although it has a person in it, um, that would be considered for cutting. Uh, that was not a position that was actually approved by the school committee. Uh, somehow it got filled and it got by me, um, and the person's been in the position for, uh, this year. So it was a, an unbudgeted position, um, in the maintenance line that, uh, I believe should be cut by the school committee, which would give you another fifty-three thousand dollars that's not reflected here. Um, and then what would happen is that the person who's in this position would exercise any bumping rights that he or she may have, and eventually, uh, somebody in the custodial maintenance area, uh, would lose a job, the least senior person. That is my report. Um, everything else remains the same, and, uh, through the chair, uh, I am done.
Thank you, Dr. Levine, I'd open up now to the committee for comments, questions. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, through the chair to, um, Dr. Levine or Mr. Stanton. Uh, earlier in the year, we took a vote to increase the preschool tuition. Does this budget reflect expected, uh, increase in that line?
Turn that over to Mr. Stanton.
Yes, it does.
Okay. And my other question, um, through the chair to Dr. Levine. The classroom teachers, um, FTE of ten at seven hundred thousand, would you mind explaining, um, to us exactly what that impact will look like?
Sure, be happy to, thank you. Um, we expect to, uh, reduce by five positions at the high school. Um, that would include one guidance position, we have a retirement from guidance that we intend not to fill, uh, and four teaching positions. The positions that we intend to, um, uh, reduce will be through retirement and or non-renewals. We do not expect any teachers who are presently teaching that we want to keep to lose a job. At the elementary level, it would be another five positions. Those positions would also be reductions through non-renewals and retirements. Uh, we expect that, uh, there will be some class sizes that will be combined. As I have looked throughout the district, I have identified four, um, reductions because of lower class sizes, uh, that can be eliminated. And, uh, any people that happen to be in those positions will be able to, uh, bump into other positions that will be open throughout the district because of retirements and non-renewals. Once again, I do not expect any person that we want to keep to lose a job. So those would be the ten positions, um, that would be reduced. So it's basically a reduction of positions as opposed to, uh, people. It will be ten fewer people, but, uh, those people would have been gone anyway, either through non-renewals or, uh, retirements.
Thank you, and when you, um, when you talked about the five at the high school, one was guidance, um, also on the list was another guidance a little bit further down. I'm, I'm assuming they're not the same. Where is the other guidance?
I only see one, one guidance position, um, and that would be, uh, estimated seventy thousand dollar savings. That would be the guidance position at the high school.
At the high school?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's the one that you referenced, okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
And for further explanation, um, Mrs. Carpenter, the, over a period of time, we have reduced a number of teachers at the high school because of the reduction of cla- um, students. Many of the students that, uh, many, many of the, much of the reduction of students at the high school is reflective of the students who are attending now Essex Tech. But some of it is just a reflection of smaller classes entering the high school from the middle school. In total, it's about a four hundred and fifty student reduction. From the eighteen hundred and fifty students when I was here in two thousand and eleven to approximately, I believe, we will open at around fourteen hundred students, uh, next year. We have to be able to, um, reduce the number of teachers or teaching positions uh, due to, uh, the lower number of students at the high school. So, uh, it, the, the budget reductions, even in a, in a, a good budget year, even in a budget year that's not difficult, I would be looking at those reductions. Now, I do, um, have a great deal of, uh, sympathy for the argument that we are a school that needs, um, uh, to move forward at the high school. Uh, if I saw or believe the class sizes, um, were impacted negatively because of these reductions, I would come back to you and, uh, ask that we put back a certain number of teachers. I will be looking at that with Mr. Buckley as he completes his first run of schedule over the next week, and, um, I'll have a better idea of, uh, how that, that will be impacted. But, um, you know, nobody likes to reduce teaching staff, I certainly don't. Uh, but the numbers, uh, call out for, uh, a reduction.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, through you to Dr. Levine. Uh, again, by way of some explanation, if we can go through a few of these proposed reductions that you, um, have put before us, I know not, uh, they've been difficult for you to put before us, and they're difficult for us to see. But in regard to the transportation reduction of eighty thousand, can you just flesh that out a little bit and explain to us what that is?
Uh, I believe it's more reflective of the actual contract that we will, um, have next year, but I'll ask Jared if that's the case.
That is correct, and through some, uh, contracted services supplies that we think that we can reduce for this one year.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Stanton, again, for your hard work negotiating that contract. So we're not talking about a reduction in service for students.
Not at all.
And we're not talking about a reduction in service for athletes or, um, any other extracurricular events that utilize transportation.
Not at all.
And I, there's a, a fairly, all of these cuts are substantial, but there's a fairly substantial number next to the maintenance line, and I think you explained part of that, um, being a position, is that, can, can you elaborate on what we're not, what maintenance we're not going to realize as a result of this reduction?
We will do, uh, major, uh, jobs that come up. Um, things that can wait a year, we'll wait. Uh, we're not going to be able to do everything that we want to do.
Yeah, so I guess if, and if I can, um, and I guess I can, uh, is there anything in the pipeline that we know about that we're pushing off? Is that, that, that's really my question.
Not at this time, but, um, we could make a projection and have that for you for the next meeting.
Please. I mean, we do have, um, while we have difficult decisions to make during this process, we also have some buildings that, um, are less than optimal. And to, to neglect them, I'll say it, neglect them, um, may be a disservice. And I think Ms. Dunn talks about this fre- fre- too, far too frequently, because this is a conversation far too frequently. Um, the ultimate cost of saving a few dollars now, um, that we pay for down the road is sometimes not worth it. So if we can maybe pu- have a look at what, um, we're not going to, what you're proposing that we don't deal with now. Uh, and you also, I know in the past, and I know it's been controversial, um, library paraprofessionals, and I, I think in your initial iteration of this proposal was elimination of all library paraprofessionals, and now I see that, um, there's some back in, and I guess I'd say, what's your rationale for that? And how do you allocate the paraprofessionals that you've put back in?
Thank you, through the chair. So, the original reduction was no paraprofessionals, we would rely on volunteers. Um, volunteers are wonderful, but the library paras that we have know their schools, they know their libraries, and they, they do wonderful work. Um, I put back half of the money for library paraprofessionals, which would basically reduce their hours from nineteen and a half to approximately ten to twelve. So they would still work at the same schools, they would not work the same number of hours. Um, there is some thought that I have that I might recommend to you that the fifty-three thousand dollars, if you do cut it, be applied back to that line item as a consideration.
I'm sorry, can you restate that last part?
So, if you take my advice to cut a maintenance job that, um, I recommended, that would save us fifty-three thousand dollars that's not reflected in these cuts, I would recommend that you consider the library paraprofessional line to put that fifty-three thousand dollars back into so that we could increase the hours back to as close to nineteen and a half hours as possible.
And, thank you. Um, and I'll just ask two more things and then yield to my colleagues. It's actually the same question.
You never yield, Mr. Hockman.
I'll sit silently. Uh, the high school dean and the Higgins housemaster that you have in here, um, they only have a, um, allocation of fifteen thousand dollars each, is that, what's?
It's actually a, a cut of fifteen thousand dollars each. We expect that the people that we hire, because the positions would be vacated, will be hiring at a little bit of a lower salary.
Okay, so high, high out, low in, that's what, okay, that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Uh, question I had, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Amico, if that's okay. Um, I just wanted, on the technology plan, I know in our earlier, um, discussion we had at the last meeting, there was a potential hundred and thirty thousand dollar reduction. Now it's sixty-five thousand dollars, and I know you referenced kindergarten through second grade. Um, well, if you can maybe just talk about why that, that, that change was made.
So, sixty-five thousand dollars allows us to con- continue the program six through twelve next year so that every kid, um, including seniors, will have a one-to-one Chromebook. A hundred and thirty thousand would allow us to also include, uh, K-one, um, Chromebook cuts, uh, which would finish the plan. We've done, uh, four, five, we've done two, three, and that, that sixty-five thousand dollars would be slated for K-one. I had to make a choice, originally it was the whole kit and caboodle that was gone. Um, I thought that we should, uh, continue and, excuse me, finish our program, uh, at the middle and high school level. So I chose to recommend sixty-five thousand dollars back into the budget, uh, to do just that at, at the high school, um, level. Uh, but that still leaves us sixty-five thousand dollars shy for the K-one.
So, okay, 'cause I know, uh, originally the plan was going to be that this year, this coming year, we were going to have six through eleven. And then the following year, six through twelve, so this, this would jumpstart it, where it would actually just go straight six to twelve?
Correct.
Okay, so the sixty-five thousand dollar hold at your, or the sixty-five thousand dollar reduction, that would affect K-one?
And that would be the Chromebook cuts, um, that, uh, that the other grade levels have throughout the district. That would delay it one year.
Okay. Alright, I have more thoughts on that, but I want to open up, Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair, uh, Dr. Levine, thank you. Um, so I just wanted some clarification on the, uh, the ten classroom teachers. So the way I'm, the way that I'm seeing it here is that regardless of the budget, those, those potential ten teachers probably wouldn't be returning anyhow, whether it's a non-renewal or retirement. But the fact that we have such a, uh, tough budget this year, you're, you're utilizing that seven hundred thousand dollars to basically save other positions. And if, and if in the future enrollment increases at the high school, as you said, you talked to, uh, Mr. Buckley, we then would hire, and of course, anywhere across the board in the city, contractually, you would hire teachers if, if you had to, if, if, if the numbers increased anywhere in, in the city.
Exactly. Um, all summer, uh, we look at, and Caro will look at, um, class sizes as they fluctuate. Uh, we have some schools that fluctuate more than others. And as, as class sizes increase to a level that we're uncomfortable with, we add a teacher. So we, we look at that throughout the, um, the, uh, summer. Once we get a, a run at the high school, those numbers don't fluctuate as much. Uh, we simply don't have that kind of movement in and out. Um, so once we get a run of numbers, we, we will be pretty, um, pretty close to where we need to be. And if we need to put teachers back, I'll come back to you and, and, uh, ask you to do so.
And if I could, and on the fifty-three thousand that you had mentioned earlier, I, I would like to see it, uh, go to you, somewhere along lines in the paraprofessional, um, area. I just think they provide such an important, um, you know, source to our schools, you know, whether it's at the Brown School or, or any other school where they're just, you know, they're just helping teachers and helping kids. And, and personally, I think it's a safety issue to, to reduce paras who are in there with kids, um, especially, you know, where we have a, I think it's thirty percent at the, at the Brown that are special ed. I think, um, I don't know if, if, I don't know if that's, if that's one of the schools targeted in this or not, but I'm just, I'm just thinking it could be any school, I just think the paras for the, um, for the pay they're receiving, um, it's just a shame to see that any of them were on a list of reduction.
So, through the chair, um, putting fifty thousand dollars back into that line would probably put back, uh, two paras out of the five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mr. Olympia?
Yes, um, thank you, Dr. Levine, uh, thank you, Ms. Murtagh, and thank you, Mr. Stanton, for redoing the numbers and really all your hard work, it's much appreciated.
Glad you thanked us in the right order. Glad you thanked us in the right order.
Exactly. Under high, under high school, I'm just a little confused with line two fifteen under guidance, there was, it looks like there was an additional FTE from five to six, and that increased to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seventy dollars, but yet, we're reducing a guidance position?
We originally had seven last year. We reduced to, we thought we would reduce to five, but we reduced to six.
Okay.
And this year, we have a retirement that we won't fill. So, there'll actually be five guidance counselors, including the director, who will take on a little bit more of a student-friendly role.
Okay, so that's, okay, so is that the seventy thousand dollar reduction?
That's the seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, but the increase from five to six for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, is that correct?
Hold on.
Yeah.
About an increase in guidance at the high school?
Yes, line two fifteen.
It's correct, it's just raises and...
Oh, it includes raises, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. And then, one other, two quick questions. Under the administration, I just, under line four forty-four, central data processing information systems, there's an increase of twenty thousand, what's, is that, just explain that?
Through the chair, that's for the potential new software that we are looking at.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mr. Arnotice?
Just two quick questions. Under athletics, under three nineteen athletics equipment, there's a jump of twenty thousand five hundred, about forty-five percent, what is that?
It's the Rydel equipment that needs to be repurposed, refinished, refurbished, bought new, upgrades for safety. That happens a lot, especially when we reach a certain point in the cycle where the equipment has been around a while.
And my other question was right near Mr. Olympio's last one, four forty-one. It just seemed, I saw the percentage, so I was curious about it. It's an extra forty thousand for contractual, contracted services.
Rather. Yep. That's the mentoring that we just explained to you.
Yeah, got it.
And twenty-five of that has come back to the offset.
Thank you, Mr. Arnotice. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. My question was actually about the guidance, the line two fifteen, Mr. Olympio asked, but I would like to add that the fifty-three thousand that we potentially have to use in these reductions, I would also agree that I'd like to see them in the paras. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Huckman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that there's been some conversation regarding line four forty-one, which is the contracted services, and I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, Dr. Levine, through the mayor, you're reducing that line in your current, and how much are you reducing that line by?
Twenty-five thousand dollars. With the fifteen thousand dollars that will be left, will be four thousand dollars for the superintendent's mentoring program, for which he has signed up, and eleven thousand dollars for the mentoring of the new administrators that will be, that will be replacing in the district.
Can you, maybe through you to Mr. Stanton, or whoever can answer, tell me how much we're allocating for professional development for staff?
Sure. Jared?
Through the chair, right now, it looks to be in the general fund portion, forty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine, not including the grants, that's the general fund portion.
Okay, and do you have any, can you give me, if you have an exact number, I'll take it, but if you don't, a ballpark on how much grant funding we use for professional development?
It's Title II A, however, that allocation has not come out yet for next year.
What was, what was this year's?
What was it for this fiscal year? I'll take a ballpark, I don't need an exact number. Two hundred and ninety-three thousand, plus the forty-six that we allocate from the general fund, so three hundred... Okay, so I'm going to use a ballpark figure of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we spend on professional development, and we should, right? I mean, we're providing staff members with skills and tools and resources that they need to help with their positions, whether they're classroom teachers or paraprofessionals. I'm sorry.
The correct number is a hundred and ninety-three thousand.
I like you better at two ninety, or whatever. But, in any event, we're spending a fair amount of money on professional development, and we should. We should support our staff members, we should support our teachers, and we should support our administrators. And this line has come under some scrutiny, and that's why we're all here, is to go through the budget and talk about the things we're willing to live with and things we're not willing to live with. But the way I see it, in the school, this fiscal year, in the school year eighteen nineteen, we're going to have a new superintendent, we're going to have a new assistant superintendent, we're going to have a new business manager. I see my friend, Ms. Metropolis, and congratulations on your legacy award you'll be receiving very shortly, we're going to have a new principal at the Brown School. I think that we, do we have one other new principal?
New CTE at the high school.
Okay.
Vocational.
To, so I think, if I may, Dr. Levine, that I think that your rationale, or Mr. Stanton, whoever put this allocation in this line, was to provide resources for administrators who are new to our district, and some of whom we don't even know yet, we haven't even engaged a business manager yet, who very well could benefit from some support, whether that's mentoring, or business relationships, or whatever it is, and just the way the world works, that costs money. So, I'm not so, so sure that your initial allocation was inappropriate, and I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor of trimming that just yet. So, I just wanted to get that out there while we're all kind of going through some lines and talking about, you know, maybe where this magical fifty-three thousand dollars that we just found is going to. And I don't disagree with anything that anyone on this committee has said tonight, that paraprofessionals are valuable resources that are helping teachers, who are helping kids, and there's safety concerns, and there's all of that. And I think before we get to the end of this, before we get to the bottom line where we're going to vote on a budget, it's going to get a little uglier, because we're going to be pitting those wonderful people against other wonderful people, and we're going to be pitting people that help our kids against other people that help our kids. So, I don't know that I want to give up on that resource for our administration just yet. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair of the committee. And I, and I do agree with, with Mr. Huckman on that, and where I agree with him is, and I've said this from, from day one, I don't think you'll find a district the size of Peabody's with six thousand students with one assistant superintendent in central office. You can go up and down the North Shore, South Shore, towns next door to us, they all have at least two to three central office people, and we've been doing it with, with two, and so if it is the will of the committee at some point to have some funds available for some type of mentoring, I would, I would agree to that, but in regards to that fifty-three thousand, I'd like to see that go, I'd like to see that go into the power line, but I would be open to discussing some mentoring money that would be available, whether it's down the road, because I think it is going to be a difficult task. It would be a difficult task for anyone under those circumstances, and many districts who do hire a superintendent do have some mentoring money out there. They usually have someone around that they can go to, because things happen that, you know, experience is, experience is a, is a, is an asset, and sometimes, someone may not have the experience that another person has, and if they can come in and, and help out, they can. Again, it's, if it's the will of the committee, though, I, but down the road, and I've said this, I, I'd like to see a budget down the road that would include, at some point, whether it's next year or the year after, a second assistant superintendent in, in central office that mimics or shows what every other district has that we don't right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question regarding the homeless transportation. Two things, I'm wondering, first, I apologize, I cannot remember if that was before the legislature to increase that at all. I'm hopeful it was, but I'm not sure, if anyone knows whether that is being increased this year.
I'd have to look.
Yeah, I know it. But the other thing I wanted to ask on that, do we track how many, I know it goes both ways. It covers the transportation of people in Peabody who are homeless and move away and come back. It also covers people who may be here and are homeless from another location. Do we have a breakdown of those numbers?
Yes.
Would you, would you be able to tell us which, which way that, that goes? And I'll tell you why I'm asking. I'm wondering if we are allowed to encourage people who are not from Peabody but are here as, as a homeless family, to encourage them to check out our schools before they decide to stay in their, their original school, because that transportation cost is astronomical. And I can understand people whose child might be a senior in high school, or, you know, fifth grader at the end of elementary school, they've spent numerous years in a system. But if someone's in a different age group or a different situation, and they're, of course, more comfortable with their original school system, but they may not know about ours, if that would help us to have people stay here and educate their child here, if that's a possibility, I'd like to just hear what the numbers are, and try to figure out if we could reduce that budget line effectively.
No, I think that's great, through the chair, I think that's a very good recommendation. We can discuss that with our, our people. Our kindergarten coordinator is, is also a homeless transportation person, and we have all of those numbers, and we can get those numbers to you, but that's a great message to send.
Okay, thank you. One other question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. On the high, high out, low in, is there any chance that we could increase that as far as a reduction on the budget to use that money? I know it's a gamble, but it's only a hundred thousand at the moment. We usually put in, or take out more.
Yeah. I can do anything that you direct me to do.
Okay.
I will take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Carpenter? And I was just asking if there's more projected retirements, or if we have a gauge on that yet?
It's always a gamble.
Yeah, you never know.
It's a number out here.
Yep.
So, we're hoping we hit it.
That's what I was just asking, Dr. Levine. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to point out about the, and go back about the professional development. At the last meeting, I did ask Dr. Levine if he would be able to go back and rework some of the professional development numbers. Specifically asked about futures management, which we no longer are contracted with, but they were still listed as a line item. I asked Dr. Levine if we could reduce that line, because we are reducing two days of professional development. So, my question was, can we reduce some of that professional development, which you did come back and, and find some money for that. In that same line, in contracted services, there is the mentoring program, which by contract, by law, we have to provide mentoring services for certain new, which I do think is important, but I just want to point out, you know, the first point was, you know, we're already reducing our professional development throughout our staff, which is where I was looking for that savings. And with all of the new positions that we're hiring, it is important to have a mentor, and I do understand that, and we will provide mentors where we have to, because it's required by law, but there are some times that the positions that we're hiring for, and that are staying and not being cut, need to have the experience when they accept the job to come in and be able to do that. So, we're not able to mentor everyone who is new in this budget. I just feel like that area that I asked Dr. Levine to look into was justified, and, you know, I just want to reiterate where I was going with that, and that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Oh, so I still want to keep the fifty-three thousand?
Any other comments or questions? I know we have one more meeting scheduled for the fifteenth. Dr. Levine and I talked earlier with Mike Chingris and Dave Gravel regarding scheduling. Perhaps we can discuss that briefly now, as to what, what type of timeframe we're looking at. We're looking to, we would have the meeting on the fifteenth, then we were looking to maybe have the public meeting on the twenty-second, to get to the council on the twenty-fourth, the final budget, and we were looking to schedule the budget hearing on, Dr. Levine, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was June?
Seventh.
Seventh.
Thursday night, June seventh.
That's one with the council.
That would be in front of the council on June seventh. That's what the city council is looking to do, and looking to have us meet that schedule.
I'm sorry, you said the twenty-second of May for the public hearing here?
For the public hearing on our end.
Okay.
Providing it to the council on the twenty-fourth, for them to receive, and then set up for June seventh.
Okay. And then the seventh, okay, June seventh. So, we're actually looking, I'm sorry, through the chair, we're actually just looking at one more, we only have one more meeting scheduled for budget.
We have one more meeting scheduled. I mean, I think we're getting closer after today, but I know there's still some work we have ahead of us. Certainly, we can schedule some more meetings should the need be, but I know right now, I think the only scheduled meeting we have is the fifteenth. I think we should probably go ahead and schedule the twenty-second for the public hearing, and if we need more meetings, we could be that week, you know, we'd be Tuesday the fifteenth. We could look to have also additional meetings that Wednesday, that Thursday, if need be. Mr. Amico?
Chair, Mayor, on the twenty-second, we do have a bunch of meetings prior to the school committee meeting, and then we have a school, do you want to have that meeting after? Because just for, just for the public's, you're probably looking at later on at, at night, and if the public wanted to attend, or should we reschedule any of those other meetings?
That's a good point, yeah, because I know we have some subcommittees, we have Building and Grounds.
We're on from five-thirty on, so...
Through the chair, may I make a suggestion for consideration? In my past life as a superintendent, we have had the public hearing actually at the beginning of the formal school committee meeting. The public hearing opens the formal school committee meeting.
Yeah.
We keep it that way? So, we can still have those subcommittee meetings?
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's fine, thank you.
Okay. So, I'm thinking, if we can ask Marge to go ahead and schedule the public session for the twenty-second.
At seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock prior to, or to open up?
To open up the...
The regular meeting.
Okay.
Keep those subcommittee meetings for now. We have the meeting set up for the 15th. Should we need additional meetings, you know, I think we have that week to work with, prior to, from the 15th to the 22nd. We could utilize one or two of those days, should we need it. Mr. Huckman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think that by law, we're required to give 10 days notice for the public budget meeting, which would mean that it would be going out Friday, the 11th. The 12th is a Saturday. With that, and locking us into the 22nd, you're correct, we only have one meeting scheduled on the 15th. Can I ask that we post for the 16th and 17th as well? And maybe we don't use them, but let's just post for them so that we don't have to worry about timing on those. Because if we meet on the 15th and we don't come to a decision or a vote, we're not going to have time to meet until the 18th. We need 48 hours.
That's a great point. I think that's a good suggestion. If we set up a hearing dates for the 16th and the 17th?
Is that May?
Yes, May.
16th, we do have a budget meeting, and the 17th are the legacy awards.
We have the budget meeting on the 16th?
No.
There's, excuse me, there's a Georgia election meeting on the 16th.
What time is that at?
5:30.
5:30? So what if we did?
That's usually brief. That's usually an hour.
So what if we kept it at 7? We just reserve that just in case?
I have a Unit A meeting that night.
Yeah, we have the George Peabody Library Awards, and then we have the Unit A meeting at 7. That was my point. And then the next, the next night is...
The Legacy.
Is the Legacy Awards at City Hall.
Which, again, I think, and if I may, is usually over by 8:00 PM. So, I mean, we're planning for meetings that we hope we don't have, but if we wait until the 15th to realize that we need more meetings, we wouldn't be able to meet till Friday, the 18th, under the opening meeting law, which requires 48 hours' notice.
May I make a suggestion?
The 21st, I guess.
I think that, I don't think that we'll need two additional nights, plus the 15th. I think we would be safe in scheduling just one, which could be after the Legacy Awards, because the Legacy Awards generally get out failure early. So we could plan on a meeting here right after the Legacy Awards, which is on the 16th?
That would be the 17th at 8.
Yeah.
I think it is wise to do that, just to give us some, give us, so we don't run into certainly any issues regarding scheduling, to reserve those times. So I think it would be difficult on the 16th, but the 17th, why don't we schedule a budget meeting 17th at 8:00 PM?
Through the chair.
If we're really having difficult, excuse me, Dr. Levine.
No, I'm sorry.
If we're really having difficulty, and we envision possibly more meetings, then we'll have to look at that Saturday or even Monday, the 21st. We could certainly do that.
Through the chair. The direction from the school committee on that maintenance position, shall I assume that I will put $53,000 into the paraprofessional line for discussion at the next meeting?
I'll open that up. Mr. Miko?
I would make a motion to do so.
I would second it.
Okay. I've heard the motion by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote on the $53,000 maintenance position?
On...
I'm sorry. On the motion, Mr. Huckman?
Yeah, thank you. Just to be clear, we're just, this is still going to be part of a proposal?
Yes.
This isn't anything we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay. So again, just to reiterate, we have a budget meeting scheduled for the 15th. We have a regular, a budget meeting scheduled for the 17th at 8:00 PM, following the Legacy Awards, if we need that. Then we have the public session on Tuesday, the 22nd, at the commencement of the regular school committee meeting, and we are looking to present to the council on June 7th.
Which is the Science Fair Awards.
Ooh, that's the Science Fair Awards. Well, I'll firm that up with, I'll firm that up with Dave Gravel and his finance chair, but that was what we were told.
Maybe they could take us late. The Science Fair Awards are usually from 6:00 to 7:00 or 7:15.
Yeah, that's usually brief. I know they move pretty quickly on that, but I know all of us like to attend that event.
Which night is that? June 7th?
Okay, well, let's get back, we'll reach out to Council Gravel, Tim Spanos, the city clerk, and the President, Ed Charis, work out some of those dates. That was what we were, was mentioned to us today, but let us work on that. But for now, let's just keep those dates in mind, at least on our end, for the dates in May. Okay? Move to adjourn?
Recession, recession.
Move to recess to the 15th. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.